On Tuesday Congressman Ted Deutch of Florida held a town hall meeting to talk about gun violence, two months after 17 people were killed during a mass shooting at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. That school is part of his district. This is just under two hours.
My first job tonight is to give you a little bit of notice that our mayor cannot be here tonight. He called me, I talked to him about 20 minutes ago. He had a case up in West Palm Beach, he's an attorney, as you know. And the traffic is so bad, he's still hung up there, so he said to say hello to everybody. So hello from Mayor Campbell. I'm going to introduce the elected officials that are on the stage. There is no particular order except the way they signed in. Okay? So I'm not...
I don't think I signed in.
You know who I am.
The way they listed. Okay. Deerfield Beach City Commissioner Bernie Parnas. Broward, by the way, my name is Lou Samaglia, I am your Vice Mayor, Coral Springs. And forget about me. Mark Morgan, Broward County Vice Mayor. Franklin Johnson, representing Honorable Alcee Hastings, 20th Congressional District. Vivian Pearson, I hope I said that right, she's representing Debbie Wasserman Schultz. Becky Thule, Commissioner Margate. Barry Moss, Commissioner Pompano Beach. Daniel Mulieri, on behalf of Congressman Alcee Hastings. Beth Talabego, on behalf of County Commissioner Michael Udine. Grace Solomon, Commissioner City of Parkland. Stacy Kagan, Vice Mayor, City of Parkland. Christian Jacobs, State Rep, District 96. Willa Stein Lawson, Regional Director, Senator Bill Nelson. Todd Roski, Commissioner Deerfield Beach. Bob Mayerson, Commissioner Parkland. Christine Hachowski, Mayor of Parkland. Sandra Welch, Vice Mayor Coconut Creek. And last but not least, Joy Carter, Commissioner Coral Springs. And with that, I'd like to introduce somebody who is very special to all of us, United States Representative Ted Deutch.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for being here. I, do we, if I missed any of like this, can you just introduce yourself? I want to make sure I didn't miss anyone. Oh, oh. Please Lamar, please, for everyone to hear.
I'm Lamar Fisher for the Mayor of City of Pompano Beach. Thank you.
Hi, guys. Ken Cutler from Parkland. How are you? Anthony Caggianno, Vice Mayor of Margate.
Man Rich, Broward County Commissioner.
Monica Mayotte, City Council Member Boca Raton.
And State Representative Jared Moskowitz is here, so let's give him a hand. Before we get started, I'd like to do, well, I'm gonna do two things, but I'm gonna combine them as one. First of all, if you're here tonight and you have served our country as a veteran, I'd ask you to please rise for a moment, so we can acknowledge you and express our gratitude for your service. And don't sit down. Don't sit down. And thank you for your service, and I'd ask you to rise again and lead us in the pledge to our flag. Agents, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thanks. Thanks very much, everyone, for being here. We are, we're here tonight now almost seven weeks since the shooting at Marjory Stoneman Douglas, and we're having this town hall meeting because this is an issue that has not gone away. This is an issue, it's an issue that, the issue of gun violence, sadly, we saw play out just today again in California. And we are here today in large part, not because of the discussions, certainly not because of the discussions taking place in Washington or in Tallahassee, we are here because the brave families who lost loved ones at Stoneman Douglas have stood up and through their courage have set examples for the rest of us in all of the ways that we should be looking to keep our schools safe and to prevent something like this from ever happening again. And we also have to express our gratitude for the student survivors who have not allowed this issue to go by the wayside. So, so to all of them, I say thank you. And I would like, before we go any further and in the spirit of what brings us together, to take a moment, to take a moment just to recall the 14 students and three staff members who were killed on February the 14th. Alyssa Aladoff was 14, Scott Beagle was 35, Martin Duque was 14, Nicholas Waret was 17, Aaron Feis was, Aaron Feis was 37, Jamie Guttenberg was 14, Chris Hickson was 49, Luke Hoyer was 15, Kara Lafran was 14, Gina Montalvo was 14, Joaquin Oliver was 17, Elaine Petty was, Elena Petty was 14, Meadow Pollock was 18, Helena Ramsey was 17, Alex Schacter was 14, Carmen Shentrop was 16, and Peter Wang was 15. And as, and as we mourn their loss and commit to take action to honor their memory, I'd like us all to stand for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you very much. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge, not by name, but I would like to just acknowledge all of the individuals who were injured at Stoneman Douglas, some of whom are here or their family members are here. Please know that even as we mourn the loss of life, we continue to pray for their speedy recovery, and we are grateful for those who have come to join us tonight. Here's, here's what I'd like to do tonight. This is a town hall. I've asked the elected officials who are in the auditorium with us to join on stage, so that we all have an opportunity to hear from you. I'll quickly lay out what I would like to, what I think we can accomplish tonight, and then I'll turn it over to all of you. First of all, as I have said from the very start, since February 14th, the issues that we have to grapple with are many. We, and I am grateful for all of those who have chosen different issues among these to make their own, to focus on in ways to move our community ahead. We have, yes, I'm going to talk about gun safety reform, and I'm gonna talk about it because it's important and because there is such broad bipartisan support for it. But I think we also have to talk about school safety and the many ways we can keep our schools safe. It's important that we focus on mental health in significant, in significant ways that acknowledge the fact that when our state is 51st in per capita spending on mental health, coming in below the 50 states in the District of Columbia, but just above Puerto Rico, that this is an issue that we need to grapple with all the time, but particularly at this moment. When the, when the suggested ratio for school psychologists in this country is 1 per 500, and in our area it is 1 per 2,000, it shows that there is more that we have to do. We also have to talk about, we have to talk about and be honest about the analysis, all of the investigations that are going on to find out exactly what happened that day. The meetings that I've had with the FBI and the breakdown that occurred at the FBI and the fact that we are still awaiting a final report from both them and from FDLE on what happened here speaks to one very important message, and that is that this community needs to know exactly what happens and should not have to wait much longer to get the results of those investigations. And, and finally, I want to get back to where I started, which is the issue of gun safety and the fact that right now there are ongoing really important efforts in a bipartisan way to take action, both in Tallahassee, which I know we'll hear about, and in Congress, to help keep our schools and our communities safe. The Stop School Violence Act that I introduced with Congressman Rutherford that was just passed and signed into law is a step forward, a small step, but it's a step forward. 21 to buy a gun, something that the state legislature passed and I commend them for, is a piece of legislation I just introduced with my Republican colleague, Tom Rooney. Again, bipartisan legislation that just makes sense. Gun violence restraining orders, Tallahassee, the state legislature passed, Congress is working on this issue. Senators Nelson and Rubio are working together on this issue, just as we are working with Congressman Fitzpatrick and other Republicans in the House as well. Representative Brooks from Indiana also working on this issue. I'm confident that something will come soon on that issue. But there are just three other issues that I would mention that also need to be part of this discussion. We know that universal background checks, the simple idea that if you buy a gun, you should have to go, have a background check performed wherever you buy that gun, is an idea that is supported, right. It is, it is an idea that has the support of over 90% of the American people. This is straightforward, it is common sense, it can help do what everyone, Democrats and Republicans, gun enthusiasts and people who don't like guns at all think that should be done, and that is keeping guns out of the hands of dangerous people. Universal background checks can help save lives. It needs to pass in Washington, and it must be a priority of all of ours. And finally, two others. One, the issue of high-capacity magazines, that Senator Rubio has expressed an interest in revisiting his previous position. I stand ready to work with him and anyone else who is willing to work on our effort to try to ban high-capacity magazines. And finally, and finally, and finally this, when a Republican veteran who served his nation nobly and lost both of his legs in so doing, my colleague Congressman Mast comes out and acknowledges what the majority of Americans want and acknowledge, which is that weapons of war do not belong in our communities, when this is, don't, don't let anyone tell you that this is not a bipartisan issue when there are, when there are members of Congress like Congressman Mast and others, Republicans and Democrats alike, who understand why it was that the assault weapons ban was in place until 2004 and why it's time to reimpose it now. So, so I, I wanna, I wanna finish with this, and then I want to open it for questions. I want to thank everyone for being here. I want to thank the, the parents, the community members of Parkland and Coral Springs, who immediately after this terrible event, decided that something had to be done and went to Tallahassee, and took leadership roles in pressing the legislature to take action and to do it in a way that can help save lives. I want, I, I want to thank you for what you did there, and I want to thank you in advance for the efforts you're gonna continue to put forth in Tallahassee until we take the next steps that are necessary to help keep our communities safe. I also want to take a minute to thank the student survivors. The fact is, the fact is that when, when more than a million people turn out in Washington DC and around the country, more than a million people in every corner of this country, and I might point out, all around the world, to march to keep the issue of gun safety on our agenda, to know that there are, there are close to 200 or over 200 town hall meetings taking place this week around the country because of the advocacy of the student leaders here in our community and frankly around the country, that's what's keeping this moving. And I, and I know, I know because I looked at the list, that I have some colleagues who are holding town hall meetings to discuss this issue, who would not have automatically scheduled those meetings during this time that they were home, who will participate in this discussion, and no doubt because of the way that these student leaders and those they've inspired all around the country have behaved, my colleagues will be forced to, to think about how they've approached these issues, and will be forced to answer the very basic question, isn't it time we do everything we can to keep our communities, our kids, and our schools safe? And so, so I'm, I'm grateful to the students. And finally, I want to go back to where I started, which is to thank, which is to thank the families, those families who even as you struggle with the intense grief, the unspeakable grief of losing a loved one, have focused on ways that can help prevent something like this from happening again. So before we open it up to questions from the audience, there are, there were a couple of, of parents that I know wanted to speak. Fred Guttenberg, if you want to come up.
So February 14th, not even two months ago, I lost my daughter Jamie, Jen, my, Jen, my wife, my son Jesse. Our family got broken apart. 16 other families here lost loved ones as well, and there were 17 other families who are dealing with injuries of some sort or another. What I want to tell you today is gun violence, you know, I talked a bit about that day over the past few months. I talked about that morning in my house, the last time I saw my kid. I can't remember if I said, "I love you" as she ran out the door. It is something that will haunt me for the rest of my life. Over the past two months, people talk about how it's gonna get easier every day, it'll get, it'll go further away. Hell, no. I've been really depressed these past few days. I'm gonna tell you the truth. It doesn't get easier. I miss my kid because of a gun. For those in our country, well, before I go to those who won't do anything, I want to first talk to those who are doing everything. So to my fellow parents, you know I love you and I appreciate you, but to you kids, when I tell you I am amazed by you, I always thought that you didn't know how to communicate because you lived in your phones. I was wrong. You're fierce, you know what you want, you say what you want, and you don't care what anyone says back, and that's amazing. So, so to you kids, I just want to tell you, the gun safety argument on the merits has been won, and the proof of that is, nobody is debating about it anymore, it's been all personal attacks directed at you guys. Shame on them. This needs to go forward in a bipartisan way. And regarding Congressman Mast, I've spent quite a bit of time with him in the past few weeks. I'm going after the Republican donors to turn them as well. The bottom line is, to win this in the long term, we need to break the back of the gun lobby that has their grip on our legislators. And to those, and to those, and to those legislators who don't come along and do the right thing, we will fire you. Fortunately, fortunately, we do have a lot of responsible legislators, and so I want to say thank you to everybody up here. We do have some of those who run left and run right, and then the President in the middle of the sandbox kicking sand in everybody's face. But, you know what? It's activities like this, it's, it's the work of all of you, this is going to get done. We will get common sense gun reform in this country. Thank you.
Fred, thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Thanks for your leadership, thanks for your courage. There are, again, the, the beauty of this community is the way every issue that can be addressed after a horrific tragedy like this is being addressed and it's being led entirely by the community. I want to express my appreciation to Andrew Pollock for the way he's taken up the issue of school safety and keeping our schools safe. And I want to, I want also, I also want to, I also want to thank, I also want to thank Max Schacter for doing the same. He is here, oh, come on out. Thank you very much for being with us today. Yeah, that's good. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you. For those who don't know me, my name is Max Schacter, and my little boy, Alex, wrote the poem, "Life is Like a Roller Coaster." And all of our, all of the 17 families were doing all of this for our loved ones, and we're not gonna stop fighting. But I'm up here to talk about school safety, so just to give you a little bit of an update. In Alex's name, I started a foundation called Safe Schools for Alex. On March 5th, we had over 25 school safety experts from across the country fly in. We had experts from Los Angeles, Orange County, Dallas, Denver, Houston, we had Miami-Dade County, Palm Beach County, everybody came in. The, the goal of the foundation is to create safe school standards. We have fire codes to prevent children from dying in a fire. It's worked. That's what our foundation is going to create for schools. After that, I went to Washington DC, and school safety is a bipartisan issue. It, it should not be polarized. So I met with every elected official that would meet with me. I met with the Attorney General Jeff Sessions, I met with Speaker of the House Paul Ryan, I met with Marco Rubio, Bill Nelson, all of these officials, even, you know, what side of the aisle they're on, they're all supported us, and we need their help. So no matter what you think about their views, they are gonna support us. I am gonna meet with everyone, and we are gonna make our schools safe. As, as far as the families go, I always get the question, is everybody working together? And I hope you know, I want you to know that we are. Every family member is in contact with one another, we are all on the same team, we're working with the students who I love are doing a great job, and on, let's see here, on the 24th, Andrew Pollock and Ryan Petty and I will be on the Governor's, Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Commission, will be the first meeting of that commission. The goal of that commission, it's a 9/11-style commission. We're going to get to the bottom of everything that happened here. We are going to hold our officials accountable, we're gonna hold the agencies accountable for what happened to our children. Max, thank you very much. I, I'd like now to, I'd like now to hear from, I'd like to hear from you. Do we have microphones? All right. There's a microphone over here, and there's one on this side. If you have a question, you could come get in line if you're a, if you are a student or a family member who lost a loved one on February 14th, you have a pass to the front of the line. So if there are, I'd actually like to start with a student, if we can, and then, we have elected officials on stage from every level of government. I'm not gonna answer all the questions, to the extent that any of my colleagues and friends would like to, I would encourage you to please do so. Yes, and we'll say, if you could just tell us your name and ask your question.
I'm a freshman at Douglas, and we are very thankful for the security at our school, but it could have easily been another school. What about every other school in Broward County that doesn't have the means to raise money like we do? Will they get increased law enforcement as well?
Well, there was, you want to tell, I know there was additional funding for that, Jared?
Hello, I'm Jared Moskowitz, Representative Christian Jacobs. So the answer to your question, and I'll, I'll give you a couple answers, is one, there's money for increased SROs, and that will be a multi-year process, it's recurring dollars. We're not gonna have double the SRO in the first year, not just from a dollar standpoint, because we have to go out and actually hire those folks, and we have to now provide them additional training, because just because you were an SRO and you were a police officer didn't mean that you had the training necessary to deal with what happened in the City of Parkland at Marjory Stoneman Douglas. So, so that's the first piece. The second piece I would say to you is, not every The second piece I would say to you is, not every school, in fact, no other school right now, is being guarded by FDLE or by Highway Patrol. And if I'm being so blunt, it should have never had to come to that. It's completely ridiculous that the governor had to step in and provide that security. So I hope that answers your question. I'm happy to turn it over to Representative Jacobs.
Thanks, Jared. I just also wanted to point out that the number of school resource officers per student is equally important. If you look across the state, Marjory Stoneman Douglas has almost 3,500 students, but you have a school, a high school, and yet another part of the state that will have one school resource officer for 400 students. So there's an imbalance there. So while there's a lot of attention in this legislature right now to increase funding, what we wanted to make sure is that as time goes on and new legislators come about, that there would be a formula that would require a match for students versus the number of school resource officers. And also, the formula would take into consideration the size of the campus. And so, that language was also in the bill that was passed, so that as we move forward beyond today and in years to come, it won't just be about the dollars. It'll be a formula that drives dollars to the areas that need it the most.
Samantha, do you have a question? Do you have a question? Okay. Samantha Fuentes has a question. Samantha, before you ask your question, I would just quickly point out that this crowd is nothing compared to what you displayed to the entire world, which was a moment of courage and bravery and strength, the likes of which many must have never seen.
How dare you call me out like that?
I didn't mean it to come out that way.
I hear a lot of talk about putting more funding in the right places in regards to school, but my peers are being treated like prisoners for a crime that they didn't commit. How do we make sure that our funds are being appropriated to the correct areas instead of things as useless as clear backpacks? Thank you.
Right. Representative Moskowitz pointed out that the backpacks apparently were donated, but the point that you make is an important one. Look, I can't, and I won't speak for the way law enforcement has approached this issue in Stoneman Douglas and security since. I know from talking to the sheriff and others, I understand the demands that the community rightly has to feel safe. I also understand what you describe. I don't know, I'll be honest with you, I don't know what the right balancing act is. My guess is, there are some people here who probably think what's being done may not even be enough. I think it's really important, and you're asking the question here is one thing. I think, and I don't need to tell you this, and I know I don't need to tell most of the other students here, but the one thing that has been confirmed over and over again in the days since is the importance of your voices in all of this. They're important here, but they're especially important in your schools and the decisions that are made going forward. And I would encourage... There's no one from the school here to address it, but I would certainly encourage you to express that and have those discussions and work through this. The leaders of the school, the leaders of local law enforcement certainly owe that conversation and addressing your concerns to you and to all of you. Thanks.
I just wanted to add that, as Max Schacter just told us, we have three members from our community who are on the Governor's Commission for School Safety. So these things that we're talking about tonight won't just stay in those rooms. We have amazing representatives that are there, not just in those from our community, but from across the state to talk about school safety. So the issues that you're raising that may not be answered here on stage are the same things that need to be raised over and over. Every time this commission comes together for a meeting, that room should be just as packed as it is tonight. And all of these ideas need to go to that commission, so they come out with a series of recommendations that nails it down and directs the state.
Please.
My name is Lenore Munoz. I am a current student at Marjory Stoneman Douglas. And none of us have forgotten what happened that day. And for a lot of us, it has been very, very difficult to deal with the trauma, with a PTSD, with the depression. And it seems like every day that I go to school, there's less and less help. More teachers expect us to move on. There are less counselors, and all of them are in the library. The therapy dogs are gone, basically. There's only a few that follow specific students. And it's right around this time when the shock has worn off and the depression is setting in, that a lot of us are not doing well. And I want to know what is being done to ensure that trauma-trained psychologists are available for every student at Marjory Stoneman Douglas?
Let me start by saying, the availability of trained psychologists... Sorry. The availability of trained psychologists is something that you deserve. I hear the same things from teachers and families at neighborhood schools as well. There's not a good... There's no good reason for why you shouldn't have all of the access that you need to train psychologists. All I can tell you, I don't have an answer for you, except to tell you that you absolutely deserve it. If there's anyone who thinks that after seven weeks, that you should just simply move on after what you experienced, after the trauma, after the images that I know so many people witnessed, that's not just unrealistic, it's cruel. And I think we need to do everything we can to make sure that you have access to psychologists and mental health professionals. And I can't tell you now how to provide that, but I can tell you that between all of these electeds and myself, we will follow up with the school district first thing tomorrow morning.
So, you don't have to wait till tomorrow. Cindy Aronberg-Seltzer, I'm the CEO of the Children's Services Council of Broward County. I want you to know that the community is very aware of the needs that you have. You are not abandoned in any way, and there was no expectation that you would be over your trauma in seven weeks, or perhaps not even for seven months. There are trauma-trained therapists available to you and your families throughout the community. Please, if you remember nothing else from tonight besides the advocacy, remember the number 211. You can call there, and they will match you with a trauma-trained therapist. We are also in the midst of doing more trauma to get more therapists trained. But luckily, for some reason, we had already trained quite a cadre of providers for you. So they're there, and please take advantage of them.
I just want to say to the young lady who is just standing there, where are you right now? I want to thank you for your bravery and for sharing that information, because there are so many students that feel the way that you do, that might not have had the courage to come out and speak the way that you have. And I want to just say thank you for all of those kids that are keeping things inside that need help. And there are a lot of resources, as you had mentioned, that are there for you. And everybody sitting up here wants to hear what you have to say and wants to hear what you need, because we will do whatever we can so that you have it. And thank you again for your courage. Thank you so much.
I just want to follow up on what Cindy just said, because there are a lot of resources in our community, and I want the parents especially to be aware of that. Cindy mentioned about 211. Henderson Mental Health Center is coordinating crisis counseling. The state, not in the $400 million, but outside of that, we are receiving money from the Department of Children and Families that will go to the Broward Behavioral Health Coalition, which is our managing entity for mental health, substance abuse in Broward County. And that money will go specifically to serve the families of Marjory Stoneman Douglas.
Thanks. Cindy, I don't know where Cindy went. Cindy, just confirming, 211 is available 24 hours a day? Right. 211 is available 24/7 by phone and online at? So, I want to just echo what Stacy said. I very much appreciate you, you're making the point, there are resources available, absolutely take advantage of them, but we're still going to follow up, because they should all be available to you at school as well.
My name is Eden Hebron. I witnessed three students pass away in my class during the shooting. For extra security, you gave us all clear backpacks. I know for a fact that the majority of the students think that clear backpacks are useless. What is going to change in regards to dealing with what the students feel comfortable and what the students think will be effective?
Well, first, I just want to tell you how... I would, if I were speaking. I just, I can't imagine what you experienced, and I'm really, really sorry. I also don't have... I don't have an easy response. I've had people call our office, we've had people call our office about the clear backpacks. I'm sure that that's true. I know that I speak for a lot of my colleagues as well. And I welcome any other input. What I can tell you, I think, is what I'd like to do is just to reemphasize some of what's been said, which is the power of your voice at your school, but also, and we'll make available, we'll make sure that everyone has available, we'll do it on our website, and we'll make sure others share information about this commission that Max serves on and the efforts that Max and Andrew and Ryan Petty are working on to keep our schools safe, so that your voices can also be heard to ensure that you feel safe and to ensure that the steps that are being taken are effective, not just something that is being done so that it tells you that you should feel safe, but that these things actually do make you feel safe and actually increase security. And we'll make sure that information is available. You should definitely play a role in that. Yes, Kristin?
I just wanted to add, I guess you might call it a point of reality, of what really goes on in Tallahassee. I just finished my fourth year there, and what happens with our budget and where the dollars get allocated are tied to a lot of bills. And one of the bills that just passed took capital dollars for our schools, which would go build the schools to be safer as they are. Max Schacter's talked to us about a foundation to build our schools safer. If there was impact glass on the inside of the doors in Stoneman Douglas, not just on the outside windows, then the shooter couldn't have gotten in those doors. We know how to build schools safer. We need dollars to make them safer. But what the leadership, what the leadership in Tallahassee just passed in this last session and the session before, was to take dollars away from public schools and give them to private schools and charter schools. So if we want safer schools, we need the dollars to make them safer, and we need to make sure they stay at public.
I just wanted to add, now that this has come up a couple of times, I feel like, and I feel this way because it sounds a lot like I'm trying to pass the buck. I'm not. Commissioner Bogan just made this point to me, and he's right. For the student who just, for the few students who have now raised the issue of school safety and the issue of having access to mental health professionals, after this town hall, in addition to simply giving you websites, I'm going to work with Commissioner Bogan and the others on stage to arrange an opportunity for students to come together with leadership from the Broward School District, so you can speak directly to them about what has to happen.
Hi, my name is Mark Bogan. I'm one of your Broward County Commissioners. And to answer to that question, we here work for you. Elected officials work for you. And if there is a need that is not being filled, you want to get to a school board member, you want to speak to the school superintendent, you need to speak to somebody, you can call us. I'm happy to call my office. If we need to put you in touch with somebody, that's what we're there for. If we need, we're here to help you. So, again, you can call us. We're here to help you. If you're not getting the services that you deserve or should have, please, give a call. We'll get on immediately. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kimberly. I'm a freshman at Stoneman Douglas. And a lot of people haven't really been talking about this, but I know it's fourth quarter now, and it's kind of like getting around that time. But the testing, first, like, I haven't heard anything about math when it comes to the end of the year testing. And you're telling us that, like, we don't have to be over this yet, but you're expecting
I am so glad that we are here to listen to how you feel, because when it comes to what you're saying, it's all about you guys. It's about the kids. And I don't think enough people have been listening to the way that you feel and the stress that you guys are going through right now. And I wish we had a member of the school board here tonight, but we don't. So we are going to make it very clear to the school board how you're all feeling. And I also recommend that you email us, like Commissioner Bogan said, and you call us and you let us know how you're feeling, so we can also express that. As all of the kids that we've heard from earlier and that we've been listening to for weeks, speak about how you feel, because that's what we need to know, so we can help get things done for you. Because it's all about you. You're our future, you're our leaders, and the stress that I feel that you're under right now is a lot to handle. And know that you're not alone, and know that the people that are up here, we're listening.
If anybody wants to call out, to tweet it, Superintendent Runcie, his Twitter is @Wruncey. Feel free.
Yes. All right. So I do have a question, but first, I would like to start out with a possible answer. So, of course, it's hard to find the good ideas of what the students want, but here's the thing, guys, it's not you guys. We have schools where they are, and we have students who have great ideas, and teachers who have great ideas. I'm sure if you guys just go to the schools and ask maybe, because we have personalization classes, we have places that you could just ask the students, what do they want? classes, we have places that you could just ask the students, what do they want? As for my actual question, I do go to school and I'm a student. I also go to gas stations and I practice in this theater and I'm all over the place and all over this county. My question for you guys is, what are you guys doing so I am safe everywhere?
This is, right, this is one I'm going to let, I'm going to answer and I'm going to let anyone else who wants to answer as well. First, before we go any further, I just want to make sure that everyone understands, especially the students, there is a school board meeting tonight. There are school board members that I know would have come and told us that they wanted to come. That's why they're not here. There was no decision to avoid this meeting. And, and I, and I, and I know that they will make themselves available for the meeting that we're going to try to schedule tomorrow morning for everyone. So what are we trying to do? Look, here's, I will speak, I'll speak about Washington, right? I can't, I can't talk about everything that's going on in Tallahassee and at the local level, although I look forward to hearing particularly from some of our local government officials to hear the dramatic steps they've taken just this week. But here's what's happening in Washington. Congress is, Congress is here, they're in their districts all this week. There are 200 of these meetings taking place and there are many more that aren't taking place where the community is pretty darn upset that these town halls aren't taking place. So when Congress goes back next week, I expect that there will be a lot of my colleagues who are either now committed to working with me to pass common sense gun safety legislation or who are very, very nervous about what their refusal to engage in those conversations will mean for them and their political future. And, and I'll just touch, I did, I mentioned these, let me just quickly go through these again. The universal background checks is supported by almost everyone in America, including the overwhelming majority of members of the National Rifle Association. There is no reason that we shouldn't pass that now. The banning, banning weapons of war, banning high-capacity magazines are steps that should be taken now. I also... And it's worth, and it's worth pointing out, it is worth pointing out for those of you who would wish to argue otherwise, let me just make something clear. There are limitations, there are limitations on second, on Second Amendment rights, just as there are limitations on every other right we enjoy. And those limitations, I believe, should tilt in the favor of the kids and the community members we're trying to keep safe. So, so I... And finally, finally, I would point out, I would point out as I did before, the efforts to do, to take these steps are bipartisan, just as the legislation to raise the age to buy a gun to 21 is bipartisan, just as gun violence restraining is bipartisan, just as taking congressional action to ban bump stocks is bipartisan. All of these bipartisan efforts require the support of leadership in order to move them forward. That is what, that's what my colleagues are going to hear this week and my hope when we get back is that they will be more committed than they have been in the past to working together in a bipartisan way to get them done.
Good evening, Commissioner Carter from Coral Springs, and thank you so much for being here. We do want to hear what you have to say. For the school board questions that you're being left emptied with and not answered, most of the teens in this room know that this Thursday night is the teen political forum and we are anticipating school board members to be here. So hopefully at that time, you will be able to get your answers. If you don't, we will still be here to follow up.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Daly and I'm, I'm the president of the Broward League of Cities, a city commissioner in the great city of Coral Springs and a 2008 graduate of Stoneman Douglas High School. And I, and I, I want to address several of the questions that have, that have come up, but I wanted to first say that I don't think in a million years that I imagined, just like any of the folks up here, that we imagined that when we stepped up to try and make our communities a better place, we would have to deal with what we're, what we're, what we're dealing with. I don't think anyone in this community thought we would ever have to deal with what we're dealing with, to hug loved ones, families and friends who lost family members. It shouldn't happen here, it shouldn't happen in this state, it shouldn't happen in this country. So to your question, and I want to address specifically the local level because I am president of the League of Cities, which is all 31 cities in Broward County. For those of you that are not familiar, Florida has some of the most significant restrictions on local governance when it comes to any, even the most reasonable of restrictions on guns, ammunition, or components, right? So if we even have a conversation, the governor can remove us from office. We can be, face, we can face fines. See, you know, the thing, the thing with folks like that, I just, I don't get it because the argument is, their argument is that guns don't kill people, bad people kill people. Why would you want to make it, why would you want to make it easy for a bad person to get a gun? I don't understand. So I, so I can tell you, a couple days after, after the tragedy, I came upon David Hogg. He was waiting to be interviewed and I said, David...
Dan, I'm going to have to interrupt you for a second.
Yeah.
Okay. I want to acknowledge the fact that it's important that we have diversity of thought in our country because our strength is in our diversity of people and in our diversity of thought. So thank you for making your voice heard. I may not agree with you and many of us may not, but our strength is in our diversity of thought and coming together, not as Democrats, as Republicans, but as Americans. Thank you. And Dan, I want to hear you continue to speak, but we have a lot of questions to get through.
Sure, I'm going to be very, very brief. I just want to be very clear on the restrictions in Florida, okay? So when I saw you that day, what did you say to me, David? You said, "Do something." And what I had to say, like so many of the folks up here at the local level, is we are restricted in anything that we do. But I have to tell you, because of, because of the Florida Legislature, you're right, the NRA has run out of even the most reasonable restrictions to chip away with, so they've taken away our ability to govern at the local level to make our communities safe. So because of the courageous students that have stepped up and said enough is enough, 10 cities in Broward County just yesterday filed a lawsuit against the state. You've got Broward County that's doing the same thing. You've got four other municipalities, including the city of Coral Springs, that's doing it next week. Cities across this state are standing up and saying enough is enough.
Thank you.
So I want to remind you all that the state of Florida just passed a law that raised the age limit to 21.
For public sales.
And the day, the day that that bill was filed, the NRA filed a lawsuit. So what we need now on top of, it would, it's a step, it's not all of it, it's that step. And what happened with the first step, the NRA is suing. So what the, who needs to hear from you all now is the Attorney General Pam Bondi, who will either defend, she will either defend vigorously the state and this new law, or she won't. She needs to hear from you.
What's her Twitter?
I don't think anybody would disagree with me that we have one of the best, if not the best armed forces in the world. I'm a veteran and I'm proud to have served. Thinking about the gun problem, I thought the Army was pretty smart. During World War II, some men were trained for eight weeks and then sent into combat. When I went through training, we had weapons, but they were locked up in the barracks. When we marched with those weapons, there was no ammo. We went through very strict training. You could take that weapon apart blindfolded and put it back together again. You could hold it at various positions. You practiced shooting with no bullets. Why do you think they did that? Safety. When you went to the firing range, you were in position to fire, you opened the breach, then they handed you a clip of ammo when your weapon was already facing the target. I often asked myself, why did they do that? Are they smarter than the rest of us? Yes. Until you're fully trained, you should not have a weapon of war. The Army did something else. If you couldn't pass the test, if you couldn't take your weapon apart and put it back together again, if you couldn't go through all the moves of port arms, left shoulder arms, when an officer came to inspect, you opened the breach, looked into it to make sure it was unloaded before you handed it to him. Why did the Army do that, I used to say to myself? As I grew older as a veteran, I did understand, to avoid accidents and death. We can do the same here. I am asking you to do what I do. Any candidate from any party that isn't for sensible gun regulation will never get my support or my vote.
Just, David, before, before I call on you, for the student who asked about tests, message from our school board member is that the school district will hear from the governor's office tomorrow to see if FSA 10 testing and algebra end-of-year tests will be waived for this year as well as for graduation requirements. We'll be sure to report back, that's very helpful. Thanks. David?
Okay, so the main people, I'm just going to ask two people, just two people to answer this question because there's a lot of questions to get through. And I'd prefer that, Ted, you work more at the federal level, so this doesn't apply to you as much. This is more of a local issue that we face. And that's the question of, I understand the importance of law enforcement in our schools and I fully support that, but I've debated these topics for the past four years through our wonderful speech and debate program at Marjorie Stoneman Douglas. And, thank you. One of the main things that always came up was when you, when you're including the, you're including more safety measures, you're ensuring the safety of students, which is, which is great. But what you have to realize is oftentimes in our, in our justice system and in our law enforcement system, there is major discrimination that we face with students of color and people of color. What are you going to do? Thank you. So my question is, I would like a local person to answer this that's working with our local law enforcement and perhaps a state rep, to answer the question of how do we ensure that we're keeping as many students as possible as safe, but we're ensuring that students of color are not getting discriminated against? And there's one more thing I want to say at the end of this, after you guys are done answering. So. Yeah. It's not a second question. It's not. It's in spirit.
I can only speak for the Coral Springs Police Department, but we do have sensitivity training to avoid discrimination. And we have every race and gender on our police force. People are still people. People still get to make their own choices in spite of their training, but you always hope that they may use their professional judgment first.
Thank you. And to the state rep that I want, there's a state rep up there, I believe, right? Raise your hand if you're the state rep. Okay. Just, as I'm sure you know, our Governor Rick Scott is heavily supported by the privatized, the privatization of prisons. What are you going to do to ensure that we don't increase the school-to-prison pipeline?
I'd say that was a layup, but, or hit a home run out of the park, but the truth is, I've not supported private prisons. I got elected in 2012, the privatization happened before then. I've actually never voted on any piece of legislation to privatize prisons. So I don't support the privatization of prisons, period. Okay? But I want to, I want to get to the, to the heart of your question because, and Kristen and I, Representative Jacobs, we had great debate when we were obviously talking about a piece of legislation we passed. And when you talk to the Black Caucus and you talk to Black Caucus members, and I spoke about this on the floor, what happened in Parkland, 17 people all at one time, got all the attention. But every single solitary day, there's some 11-year-old girl just doing her hair and a bullet whizzes through drywall and takes her life. Or there's a five-year-old playing basketball outside and a bullet whizzes and takes his life. Or there's a two-year-old or an 11-year-old. Miami-Dade has had 300 kids killed by gunfire in the last 11 years. That's 17 Parklands. And they didn't get a bill, they didn't get the governor's attention, they got nothing. And so the, what you students are doing, and I want to give the credit to the students and I'll tell you why. On this issue, on this issue of equality, that hey, look, the world is moving for Parkland, but what about all these other communities that the world has not moved for? What did we do after Pulse, David?
Good question.
We did, I'll tell you what we did. In a weird, unfortunate, twisted world that we lived in, I led the effort in the House to try to get us into special session, being a Marjorie Stoneman Douglas graduate from the city of Parkland, thinking something like this could never happen in my community, but hey, let me go take the lead on this for Orlando. And they wouldn't go into special session. They refused to go. Do you know for two years, they've been trying to build a memorial and we've refused to fund it in the legislature?
Let's fix that.
Okay, we're going to fix it. Okay? And so I want to give you credit and a lot of the other students because I really do think you guys could have made this all about yourselves and all about your community, but instead what you did was you opened it up to the world. So I want to thank you.
There's one last thing. It's not a question, it's just a statement to all of you. Because we always get a, we always like get people saying thank you, but it's really because of you guys that we're able to do this. So give yourselves a round of applause, but there's one thing I want to say. It's a quote from Martin Luther King that's really helped inspire me and I think it may inspire a lot of you guys. And it's, "If you can't fly, then run. If you can't run, then walk. If you can't walk, then crawl. But by what, but whatever you do, you must keep moving forward." Thank you, guys.
Thank you, David. Thank you. Before, before we take the next students, in addition to the, the good work that, that Max and, and Andrew and Ryan have been doing, I see that Lori Alhadeff. The Alhadeffs have also really championed the cause of school safety. And I, Lori, if you want to say, and I don't know if Yolanda's there, but please, thank you for, thank you for being with us and our sympathies are with you.
Hi, my name is Lori Alhadeff and my daughter was Alyssa Alhadeff. She was brutally shot down on Valentine's Day. Since then, I've started a nonprofit organization, Make Schools Safe. And I'd just like to say before my question, I would like you to look at the Alyssa Law in New Jersey when you leave here today. My question to you is, time. Alyssa was in the first classroom and she had no time. The shooter came first to her classroom. How are you going to have communication? How are you going to have communication with law enforcement to get them into the school to stop the shooter from killing more kids? What are you going to implement to communicate between the school and the teachers to law enforcement?
Well, first of all, again, our condolences, and I appreciate the efforts that you've been putting forth. One of the things that we've been speaking about in connection with Stoneman Douglas is the lack of, as you point out, the lack of communication, the tape delay on the video. There are a lot of things that can be done, and I know that some of the groups who are looking at this, I know Max and some of the others, and I know you're gathering information, there are schools around the country that have, and school districts that are utilizing technology to help that communication take place immediately. There's no reason that we shouldn't benefit from the work that's been done elsewhere, the success that we've seen elsewhere, and take that and implement it, utilize it in our own schools. And I know between the governor's task force and the work that you and your husband are doing, and the work that so many others are doing, that we're going to have all of those options. Then it will be up to the community and our state, and ultimately, all working in concert with the federal government to make sure that there are resources to do that. I think that if we have ways to help ensure that that communication can take place, and we know that it works, and we've seen it work in other places, then the least we can do is find ways to come up with the money to pay for it, so that we can use those in our schools and prevent something like this from ever happening again. That's, I think, what we have to do, and we're gonna have to do it together.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Yes.
All right, I'm Cassidy, I'm currently a senior at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. We've gotten our privacy invaded with those clear backpacks. We see how much we're worth with those bright price tags, which say $1.05. We have to wear badges every day to prove that we are part of the Stoneman Douglas family. We have to walk through fences and checkpoints every day. School is supposed to be a place where you love to be and love learning, and now it is a prison, where we see unhappy faces everywhere. I'm a senior, so my biggest concern is the underclassmen and the new incoming freshmen at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, and their feelings about this. We all want to feel safe at school, we're on the same page with that. So what is gonna happen next year and so forth, when majority of students at Stoneman Douglas High School feel clearly unhappy and feel less safe and uncomfortable at school?
Cassidy, all I can do is to make sure that you're in a position to participate when we have the meeting with our school board members, with leadership from the school district, with law enforcement. Nobody understands better the way you feel and the things that you're dealing with at school now, in the midst of the efforts to increase security, than you do. And so, just as you powerfully lay that out for all of us here tonight, I hope you'll do the same thing in that meeting, and contribute to finding a way to help ensure that people can remain safe, and that addresses the very real concerns you have, that, again, you described so eloquently. Thanks, thanks Cassidy. Yeah. Daniel.
Hi, my name is Daniel Tabarez. Or it's your boy Danny. I'm a freshman at Marjory Stoneman Douglas. I helped organize the Parkland March for Our Lives. But first of all, before I ask anything, I want some respect for these people that have come here, because others didn't, I don't want to call their names. This awareness and engagement is incredible, but now, we need action. We have a captive audience here in this room. We are aware that we have a small window of time before the cameras go away. Other than voting, can you suggest an actionable task every person in this room can take away from tonight to support our movement?
I can. Yeah, I can, actually. Thanks for asking.
It wasn't a joke.
No, I know, and I'm not about to give you a funny answer. Raise your hand if you're on Twitter. The rest of you could probably stand and learn. Look, I'll be perfectly honest with you. Members of Congress, just like city commissioners, county commissioners, and members of the state legislature, pay attention to what happens when they hear from their community. They pay attention to calls, they pay attention to emails and letters, and yes, they pay attention to Twitter. It would probably send a very powerful message if everyone in this room, you guys, the experts down here might tell me if I'm onto something here, it would send a really powerful message if everyone in this room will take one discreet measure. If everyone in this room tweeted with a hashtag, we have a hashtag for this event, anyone? Town Hall MSD, Town Hall, right? Town Hall for Our Lives, okay? Then if we all tweeted with that hashtag, @TheSpeakerOfTheHousePaulRyan, and, no, 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 because it's one thing for me to tell the Speaker how important it is for our community that he allows us to vote on universal background checks, but it is something entirely if he hears from you. So, if you tweet @TheSpeaker, I feel pretty confident that when I go back to Washington next week, that I will be able to speak very powerfully about what I experienced, because in some way, he too will be experiencing what I'm experiencing tonight. So, so.
@TheSpeakerRyan.
At, I knew you'd know that. @TheSpeakerRyan, if you simply respectfully, as I always treat the Speaker, if you simply respectfully tweet at him that we should, that when universal background checks is supported by over 90% of the people in this country, we should have a vote on it on the floor of the House. Fit it, fit it into, let's, let's do it now. Sure. Great idea. We're actually, we're gonna do it while we take more questions, because people have been waiting in line for a long time, but.
I'm not finished.
Oh, sorry. But that's what I encourage people to do, just tweet at him and respectfully tell him that more than 90% of the people in America want universal background checks, bring it to the floor for a vote. That's the simple and succinct message, yes.
So, we, the March for Our Lives of Parkland, stand up, stand up. Don't be shy.
We are the organizers.
Stand up. Sam, you too. We made a reminder, it's 5:04:09, text march, and we get, we put updates, and you can learn what you can do to support our cause. 5:04:09.
Thank you, Daniel, thank you, and thanks for the organizers of the march. I should also say, I don't want to be discriminatory, for those of you who aren't on Twitter, you can make phone calls also, it's very effective. Leave a message.
Yes.
Oh, is that right? Okay. I'll let him know that, too, yes.
Yes, Congressman Deutsch, we had an opportunity to speak a little earlier tonight. I'm Greg Pittman, I teach American history at Douglas. I will say, Cassidy was one of my former students, and she, I guess, is a foster this year, but on a more serious note, the teachers need continued support, just like the students do. I've heard a lot about our students, and we are so proud of what our students have done, but likewise, teachers and other support personnel, @Douglas, we need help not only here tonight, we also need help as far as us dealing with what we dealt with, and trying to get all of our kids out safely, which fortunately, because of many of the teachers, things were as terrible than what happened, but I think it could have been different if the teachers hadn't made some decisions that they made, and had to decide some things pretty quickly. Couple concerns, one that I mentioned to you earlier, I know that the Department of Law Enforcement, they're supposed to be @Douglas, as it's been announced, from 6:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. Yesterday morning, I go into school, they were not there. Actually, no one was there when I went in at 6:30, the crossing guards were there, but no one was at the gates. So that is a concern of mine, as the teachers know, some of the students are worried about things going too far, some of us on the teacher's side. When I go and there's no one there, except crossing guards, and anyone can go in a gate, I could have driven a herd of elephants through the gate, and no one would have known it, and I've spoken to administration, and I've called the governor, and I'm speaking to deaf people, I think, because we're going to school, and Cassidy, I don't know, you're probably there, it's still 7:38 in the morning, so she's one of the walking dead in the morning, but coming in at the last minute, but if you're in earlier there, there is a lack of security. And that is a big concern of many of the teachers. I know all of them may not speak up, because they don't want to speak up, of course, that's how most are afraid, maybe to speak up, I'm not afraid. You know, the security's not there that we do need when they're supposed to be there. And as someone said earlier, questions about the gates, if there were security at the gates and the gates were closed, people can't come in and out of the gates. So that's a problem, probably not only at Douglas, but at other schools. For our local officials and others, and our state officials here, guys, this is a big deal, that you all need to do something about, because it's a problem. I'm a teacher, I'm gonna tell you that the emperor doesn't have any clothes on, because they don't, and it's a problem that needs to be addressed. I know the kids are all bent out of shape about the backpacks, and that they can get bent out of shape about the backpacks. As a teacher, I'm worried about, we're worried about people coming on campus that should not be there. We do want the IDs as teachers, because I have junior classes, I know my 180 or so students this year, my students from last year, and some other kids, but there's probably 2,800 kids on campus, I don't know who they are. And so with that, an ID, we don't know who you are, and we don't know whether you're one of ours, or one of our favorite students from last year, or not, but, you know, we don't know, so it helps us identify who is or isn't a stranger. We do need more security on all schools, and definitely the perimeter is another area we need help. And also, I agree with earlier when it was talked about, not enough of the mental health support may be there. I know many of the teachers still certainly need help, the therapy dogs we still need, and things are dwindling down too quickly as far as support leaving the school. I know the students need it, I know the teachers need it, and we need help from everybody, and so I don't know if any other teachers are gonna speak up, there are a few others here tonight, may say what you agree with me or not, but we need help, and appreciate anything that you all can do for us.
Thank you very much. Thank you. There are still long lines, I'm gonna try to go back and forth, if you can, if you can, if you can just, if you can ask your question, if you can ask your question when you get up to the microphone, we'll try to field as many as we can, but I'm gonna try and take, we'll try to take maybe four at a time, and then see if we can get through as many people as possible, yeah.
Hi, I'm Christine Yarid, I'm a freshman at Marjory Stoneman Douglas. First of all, I'd like to start off by doing something that almost no one has done, and thank our amazing teachers at Marjory Stoneman Douglas, and just. These brave, strong teachers saved many lives that day, and even before then, they continued to shape us into the mature, strong, young, resistant children fighters that we are today. None of this would have been possible without these amazing teachers educating us on how to fight back for injustice, and how to use our voice for good. These teachers have the power to change lives, to shape our futures, yet they don't have the resources to do so. How will you support these teachers through these times, where they don't have much pay, where they don't have the resources to teach their children, where they have too big classes that are too big, where they can't even connect with each student, or even learn their names, because we have such a lack of teachers? How will you support these teachers through these trying times?
Thank you. I know I speak for everyone up here when I say that there is unanimity on this stage, that what you describe about teachers is accurate, and teachers deserve to be paid a salary that is commensurate with the contribution they make to our communities. And if I may, I appreciate so much you're saying, you're talking about the role that the teachers played in making you fighters. I would like to take a moment to thank all of the parents in this room and in this community who have done exactly the same for all of their kids. Yes.
My name is Gary McCarthy, I'm an elementary school teacher in Broward County, and I am so filled with faith by everything I'm hearing from these high school students, and from these teachers, and you are a testament that public school systems can work. I want to, you know, address something real quickly, you know, education to me is the answer to every problem that we face, including the problem that we're talking about tonight in some regard. And the other thing is voting, and that cross-section of education and voting, and educating voters, and allowing people that want to vote the right to vote, making that easier on a local and a state level, it's of huge importance to me. I am volunteering for an organization called the Voter Participation Project, that are working with the Broward Democrats right now. Please look at the Voter Participation Project. My question is, for everyone in the room, what can you do to help get people like these people in office? These are not representative of everyone that's representing us in, well, Broward maybe, but the state of Florida. We need the right people in office. What are we doing in regards to gerrymandering of Broward County? What are we doing in regards to making, just getting people that want to vote the right and the ability to vote, whether it's socioeconomics or anything? You know, we can't purchase a civil society, and maybe we can legislate it, I don't know, time will tell. Thank you to you young people that are making this possible.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna come over here, I will just say, there are many good ideas, we will follow up with you on that, though this was not on the topic for tonight. I firmly believe that if we, if the United States Congress passed the Democracy for All Amendment that I introduced to overturn Citizens United and get money out of politics, we would be doing more than all of this combined. Yes. Yes, sir.
My name is Steve Wind, I am a Parkland resident for over 20 years. My son Alex is a junior at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. It's time to address the elephant in the room. For the 30-year period between 1984 and 2014, the sandwiched 10 years in there, we had an assault weapons ban. The death toll between the 10 years prior to the 10 years with the assault weapons ban was almost cut in half, and then the 10 years between 2004 and 2014, it tripled, more than tripled. So, Congressman Deutsch, it's not gonna be easy, the question. How do we get this ban reinstituted? How do we define what an assault weapon is correctly, so we can get the 200 or 2,000, whatever Marco Rubio said, there are types of assault weapons during the town hall meeting at CNN, at the BB&amp;T Center? How do we get those weapons redefined, so we can get these killing machines off the streets?
Well, I would, I would, I would say, I would say three things. First of all, for the people who say that we can't do anything, we can't ever come up with a definition to ban assault weapons, because it's impossible to define them, I submit to you what is obvious to everyone, they have no intention of ever finding any way to outlaw assault weapons. Secondly, look, we know, we know the assault weapons that was in place, as you point out, Steve, we know that it was successful. We know that weapons of war are opposed by the majority of people in this country, and that Congress simply needs the courage to stand up, and to stand up to the gun lobby to do what is right, to help keep our communities safe. I mean, there are, and I would just say, and as I offered to Senator Rubio at the town hall a month and a half ago, if there's a serious willingness to sit down, to come up with the correct definitions that can satisfy everyone, to ensure that weapons of war, like the one used in Marjory Stoneman Douglas, and mass shooting after mass shooting are kept, are illegal, then let's by all means sit down and have that conversation, I'm ready to do it. I'm ready to do it tomorrow. But let me just finish with this, let me finish with this. The Constitutional Review Commission in Florida had an opportunity to ban assault weapons, and to put that on the ballot for 2018, in November. They didn't. The Florida Legislature, despite the heroic efforts of the members of legislature on this stage, had an opportunity to ban assault weapons, they did not. But I am proud to tell you, that even as we push Congress to do the right thing, and even as my colleagues here will work in Tallahassee to do the right thing, that if, if we are unsuccessful, that simultaneously, we are working to put on the ballot in 2020, a constitutional amendment to ban assault weapons. If, if our, if our elected officials, outside of those on this stage, if our elected officials do not see that there is a clear majority of people who understand that this common sense step to keep our community safe is necessary, then we'll put it on the ballot, and let the citizens show them directly. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Nierenberg, I'm a member of MSD Mobilizing Alumni, we're now over 11,000 alumni strong. My question isn't for the people on the stage, my question's for the people in the front row here, the students of MSD. What do you need from the 11,000 of us? Literally, whatever it is, you name it, we'll make it happen.
Come to me after the event, and please tell me.
Thank you very, thank you very much, yes.
Hi, my name is Angelina Lazo, and I'm a senior at Marjory Stoneman Douglas. After the Federal Assault Weapons Ban Act expired in 2004, fatalities rose 183% in one decade alone. What are we going to do to start to put something into place that will keep the hands of civilians off of weapons of war? How to make people understand that we aren't trying to take away the Second Amendment? And, and that the NRA is simply just an interest group, not a part of government?
Well, first of all, we need to bring you to Washington. And, and we need to do all the things that we just talked about. Look, you're completely right, you stated clearly, and powerfully, and in a way that is easy for everyone to understand, and I hope that you'll continue to do that, and find as many opportunities as possible to share that with the world. Thank you. Yes.
Hello, everybody, my name's Jerome Dallas, and, thank you. Alright, so I'm sure all you guys, you know, going to school, you guys have all heard about Spirit Week, right? Everybody knows what Spirit Week is. For those that don't know, Spirit Week's when all the groups come together, clubs, teams, everybody gets together, and, you know, comes together as a community within the school, and educates everybody about all the different teams and things you can do. Alright, so I'm a part of an organization called Justice Democrats, go to justicedemocrats.com, we have 51 candidates running for office on Bernie Sanders' platform right now. Anywho, what I would like to do, we have, you know, the mom that came out with her, her new organization, you know, this guy that was just up here talking about his organization, there are thousands of organizations all across the city, all across the country, all across the place. I want to get everybody together, let's have a Spirit Week for grassroots organizations. What can you guys do to help bring us together as a community? This should not be the first time I've seen most of the people in this room, we need to come together again as a community, and you guys need to help us with that.
First of all, I'm in. Secondly, you, what you describe is exactly what needs to happen, that it doesn't need to start with us, you just start rolling with this thing, and you let us know, and I guarantee you, we will help bring people together, and we will follow your lead to get people around the table to move this forward.
Whose phone number can I get right now? I'm not playing.
I got, I got it, you ready? I'll give you mine.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you already have ours, okay, alright. Yeah.
Hi, so my name is Faith Ward, and I'm a senior at American Heritage, thank you, Sophie. And so I was gonna ask a question very similar to David Hogg's, but he got to it first, but it's okay, because I had two. But first, I just wanted to tell a very, very brief story, because I know everyone, everything's been taking a while. So my father grew up in apartheid-era South Africa, and he is a, here we might say light-skinned, he's a mixed-race black man, basically, and so in that era, he was considered colored. And so during apartheid, people of color were not allowed to own weapons, and the police were heavily militarized. And so one story that my father has told me multiple times, since this movement has started, and since I have gotten involved in it, is how he was protesting apartheid with other people of color, other black people, colored people, and Asians in South Africa. And the police came by, and they told everybody, stay exactly where you are, no one move, and a five-year-old stepped forward, and they shot him down. And so, this is something that I've been keeping in mind, in terms of the militarization of police, so my question, basically, a lot of the proposals that are being discussed are about increasing security, and some of these include increasing the capabilities of police, such as arming them with AR-15s, but considering that police militarization can have disproportionate consequences on communities of color, such as a few years ago with the Black Lives Matter movement in Ferguson, or currently in Sacramento following the murder of Stephen Clark, are we fully considering all of the impacts that these proposals, of these proposals, before supporting and implementing them, not just on a local scale, but on a national level?
First of all, thank you, thank you very, very much. That was really powerful. And, look, are we? I don't know if we are, we certainly need to, we all have to. And if there's any question about that, you don't need to go too far back, but as you point out, to Sacramento just over the past week, and as the facts come out in that case, it certainly makes the case that we've gotta be awfully careful, as we're going about any change, to ensure that we do it in a way that is fully respectful of our, of everyone in the community, and that works to ensure that everyone in the community is kept safe.
Right. So Mike, you know, in addition, you said we should, but I want to ask, what specifically are we going to do about it? Not just, oh, we should do this, because, I'm sorry, but I feel like a lot of the answers we've gotten are, we should, and we can, but not specific points of what we can do. And I know you don't have a lot of time right now, you come up with the whole plan, but I'm just wondering, what specific points of action can you come up with?
I, I don't, but can I invite you to come into my office, so we can talk about everything that should be in the plan that we take up?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, thanks.
Can I get, oh, thank you.
I want to just, we're, we're running out of time, I want to just, if I may, reserve some time for the last few questions for veterans? Do we have some vet, yeah, sir, come on up, I'm, and I'm sorry if there are others who won't get a chance, I just wanted, yeah.
Hi, my name is Steve Will, I'm a Vietnam Vet. First of all, I'd like to say to the students, I empathize with you, I too have PTSD. I have to tell you that I went to many private psychiatrists, never got help, one made it so bad, so worse, I ended up suicidal in the VA, I finally got the help there. Do not allow them to privatize the VA. We veterans deserve the understanding that is provided there. Secondly, I want to say to all of you in this room, when I came back from Vietnam, I was totally disillusioned, joined an organization called Vietnam Vets Against the War, led by Senator John Kerry, now Senator John Kerry, and it made a difference. We threw our medals in the Capitol steps, you could not see the marble of the steps for all the medals, quadriplegics, quadruple amputees throwing their Purple Hearts on the steps, it did make a difference. Keep it up. We had candlelight vigils, candlelight vigils in front of the White House, it was very disturbing to President Johnson at the time. And finally, I, those are my words of encouragement to you, keep it up, it does make a difference. I firmly believe that those of us in the millions who protested against that war were successful in bringing an end to that war. Please keep it up, do not dismay, it will happen for you.
Thank you, sir. Thank, thank you, sir, thank you, sir, for your service, and thank you for your passionate advocacy and words of wisdom that I know the students take to heart. Sir, two, two more, I, three, okay, alright, here's what we're gonna do, here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna go, one, two, and then three, and I, just because you were so demanding, four, and then, and, and then, I don't anticipate it'll be the same turnout, I don't know how, I don't, I don't know that people will have the appetite to do this again, but we intend to have another one of these next month. So, sir.
Thank you very much, Senator, Congressman. I want to say a couple of things. One, for any veterans here that have PTSD, southeastern guide dogs, and vets helping heroes, and I'm on the board of directors, we will get you a guide dog, and at no cost, at no cost. It'll take time, but you'll get a guide dog.
Thank you.
The other thing is, I'm a Democrat, and I own guns, and I believe in the Second Amendment. I don't want to take anybody's guns away from them. I don't want to take anybody's guns. It's crazy. I see the lies out there that say, Democrats want to take guns. That's crazy. I have guns. I don't want your damn guns.
And we're not coming for yours either, sir.
I want, I want sane gun laws, sane gun laws. I don't want to see a, an AR-15 out there. That's insane. You know, they asked the man who invented the AR-16, if he ever wanted that to wind up in the hands of civilians. He said, are you people crazy? Never was that intended for being in the hands of civilians. It's not a civilian gun, it's a gun of mass destruction. Simple as that. When the Second Amendment was written, there was one gun, one musket ball, and one soldier. And they've carried it now to a 30-round clip, you know, that fires as fast as you can pull the trigger. It's insane. And all you gotta do, to figure out how we get around this, is follow the money, follow the money, follow where the NRA money is going. And then, and then you vote against the person who got it, it's simple. Just follow the damn money. Thanks. It is, Rubio got over $3 million, what, are you wondering why you vote against it?
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Debbie Hickson, I'm Chris Hickson's wife, and I just wanted to, thank you. I just wanted to take a minute, before I left, to say to the state legislation, thank you for what you did in a short amount of time, it isn't enough, but it's a start, and it really was, because the kids pushed that, and we, we wanted to make sure that we said thank you, we do appreciate it, it was, you know, passed by not just Democrats, but also Republicans, and we, we want to say thank you at the federal level, we also want to thank you for what's been done there. Again, it's not enough, but it is a start, and we want to be sure that the conversations are, are not friendly, but in a way that we can compromise, so we don't want people yelling against each other, we want it to be so that we can make something work and stick. And we do have to ban assault weapons, however it has to work, it is not about the Second Amendment, it's about what's right and what's wrong. So thank you again.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Last two, quickly, and I'm told they're kicking us out of the room, yes.
Hi, my name is David Deschant, I'm a Marine Vietnam veteran for peace. Tomorrow is the 50th anniversary of Dr. King's assassination, and the 51st anniversary of his most courageous speech, Beyond Vietnam, A Time to Break the Silence. With these poignant anniversaries, we are confronted here, in our communities, with how far moral, patriotic, and engaged Americans must go to protect and defend our communities. Vietnam veterans were expendable, you are not. To the Parkland families, as you, and then I'll ask my question. As you grieve your loved ones and friends, I guarantee you, you will heal from this horrific crucible, and laughter will return to your lives. I have experienced and bear witness to this healing as a volunteer for Gold Star Mothers and Gold Star Families, and the Tragedy Assistance Program for survivors, and other healing organizations with their tremendous resources. I caution and beseech you to protect all of your classmates, the friends, strangers in your schools, and neighborhoods from bullies, cliques, drug dealers, and various predators. Please embrace, please embrace, your excruciating painful emotions, they will not hurt you. Do not suppress them with alcohol, cigarettes, and other unhealthy behaviors. Grieve naturally, cry, and hug each other, then organize in strategic alliances, occupy and create inalienable solutions, making honorable dents in our communities and nations, our nation, for seven generations, an Eric Corrigan Nation philosophy. Most notably, be kind and gentle to yourselves, you are survivors. And you must carry on to protect and defend and honor the fallen. Treasure your lives, Semper Vamis. Now, for Ted, and the others of the National Congress, who got Fs from that bloodthirsty I've never seen a congressman get an F before, so I thought, oh, I'll bring it up. What actions will you and your colleagues in Washington do to counter the malicious media attacks on the survivors and their families?
I am, I am, I appreciate, I appreciate the question, I appreciate your service and your very powerful words. I am, I am sorry that my parents are no longer with us, because this would be the first F that they were ever proud of their son receiving. And I, and I appreciate the serious question. Look, here's how we know that this time is different. We know this time is different, because there are gun lobbyists who are attacking the students sitting in this hall. We know, we know it's different, because there are colleagues of mine in the United States House, who are attacking students for standing up for themselves, to ensure that nothing like this happens every, anyplace else. And, let me just say, and let me just say, that when they do it, and when they engage in the kind of outrageous bullying and efforts to silence them, they will fail, it is cowardice, and we will stand with the students. Last question.
Vote them out, vote them out, vote them out. Hi, my name's Michael Hool, I was born and raised in Fort Lauderdale. Congressman, we, we met in DC.
Please, please, last question, yeah.
So, so first of all, I'd like to, I'd like to say how impressed I am by these Parkland kids who inspire me. It's, it's amazing what you have done, but I want to speak about several things that some of the students mentioned, and some other of the parents. There's a current bill, we spoke a little bit up there, it's HR 5087, that the Judiciary Committee is pushing aside and hiding in Washington DC. Congressman Goodlett, the Chair, phone number 202-225-5431, has pushed this into Subcommittee. We went in there, I brought my husband in a wheelchair, and they wouldn't even let those double doors open, so we could barely get in there, and they sidelined... barely get in there, and they sidelined us and sidelined us. He's termed out, I think. So if that bill is still active, which is what we want now, it has everything, it has a huge list. Why can't we try to push that now? Why can't we get something done now? It's there. It's in DC.
Will you tell us, tell us what that bill does?
It's the assault weapons ban.
Right. It's the assault weapons ban that I proudly introduced when I went back to Washington after the horrific shooting at Stoneman Douglas. You are exactly right. We don't have to wait. There, I'm not blaming any one person. I am blaming an institution.
I think it's the Chair, and I think it's Paul Ryan. And Paul Ryan's number is 225-3031. Yeah, and I'll be calling. And I also, what? Well, there's several other things. Sam mentioned something that was super important. I'll talk real fast. These kids going with these backpacks, that's not right. There are things now that our military have that are defensive. One of them's called the boomerang. They use it to help triangulate stuff. These things can be miniaturized. You could put them in like smoke detectors in a school, so it can help, be tied into AI cameras, which we have in our smart cars. That can go to the sheriff's office, and then they can help find out where a problem is. And these kids can go the other way. This is available now off the shelf. Why don't we get Homeland Security or someone else to help move some of this technology? We can get smart guns with fingerprint sensors. We all have it on our iPhone. Boom, you buy the gun, you have the right to use that gun. No one else should get that gun. This stuff is available. So I want anyone who knows anyone in technology, I called Apple myself. I tried to get through, I got nowhere. But if anyone knows someone who knows someone, and I'm going to join Twitter, so I'm going to hit up Emma and all the kids there, Delaney and Lauren Hogg, she was awesome. And who said the Lego comment? Was that Sarah? That's hope you step on a Lego when they're picking on the kids. Sarah Chadwick. That was an awesome comment. That jumped me out of my chair. So proud of you all. Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you very much. I, as I, as I said, as I said before, we're going to do this again next month. I would, I would stay, I'll stick around. I will stick around. Hold, hold on. I will stick around. If, hold on. I will stick around to answer questions. We can't do it in here because they have to close the hall. I will, I will stick around outside, and I appreciate everyone for coming. And I look for, and I look, and I look, and I look forward. I will gladly talk to you. First of all, I spoke about that already. I will glad, no, no, actually, I am going to talk about that. Sorry. No, no, I am. I know, I know we have to go. But I'm just going to quickly say, and I said this before, and if I didn't, I apologize. We, we, and I know I said this at the beginning, we, this community and the students and families and those especially who lost loved ones, need to see the conclusion of these investigations quickly so that we can find out exactly what happened. In the meetings that we've had with the FBI, it is, it is just impossible to understand how it is that the calls that came in did not rise to the level of taking action. The fact is, the fact is, the fact is that when you say, let me just finish, that when we tell people to see, if they see something, then they should say something, the fact is that they expect something, and they expect something to happen when it's finished. I'm going to, now, I'm going to, I'm going to talk, I'm going to stick around. No, I'm, again, again, again. The Promise Program had nothing to do with this, and you know that's true. I am, I appreciate the opportunity, shh, I appreciate the opportunity for everyone coming. I appreciate them. I'm going to talk to you after, sir. I'll talk to you after, I promise. I appreciate everyone coming. I appreciate the time that you put in, and most especially, I appreciate what you're doing to help change this community and this country. Thank you very much, everyone.
I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. Ted, thank you so much. And we will be doing this again next week. And don't forget Thursday night, the Team Political Forum, right here.
Hi, everybody. Just a quick reminder, Mox News survives solely on your tips and contributions. It's easy to make a contribution or a tip or leave a tip at moxnews.com, or there are clickable links in the text body of this video. It should take the average person, most people, probably less than two minutes. Thanks very much for your time and your continued support. Stay cool, Wednesday. This war is going to end. Till that day.